We are at six oh seven P M can we all stand for the pledge of allegiance the flag is located over Sean's shoulder.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome bow our heads and open our hearts for a moment reflection. Thank you all. All right, I ask if there is a motion to approve the consent agenda two one to two five moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Excellent motion carries four zero. Uh, any public input tonight? Roger. Do you want? Executive session at the end, huh? Not bad. Okay. Yeah, he's making sure.
That was a great suggestion.
Are you a Yankee fan?
I don't.
Are you a Yankee fan? Did you say he wanted to go home and watch the game?
That's what I thought he wanted.
Sorry Yankee fan, your stock's continuing to rise with me. All right, so no public input. We are going to pivot the superintendent's report and put it. Or do you want, who wants to take them? Who wants to take the role by?
I'm gonna take the bull by the horns.
Awesome.
Bruce, introduce the school committee. Our district teacher of the year, Mr. Brian Goodwin. A little background on Mr. Goodwin. First of all, Brian is a Salve University graduate with a degree in elementary and special education. And is a special education case manager here at Wilbur McMahon School with our middle school students, grades six through eight. Uh, he also holds a certificate in Orton Gillingham in morphology. And that helps to support the students that are in certainly in his care. Uh, Brian was honored by the Newport County Regional Special Education Advisory Board for his dedication to supporting students with diverse needs. Brian lives in Bridgewater, Massachusetts with his wife Courtney and his two boys who are also students here. Cam and Callan. Um, and in addition to teaching, uh, Brian is, uh, enjoys playing, coaching and refereeing ice hockey. Couple of things that some of our teachers have said about Brian. Brian brings an unwavering compassion, deep expertise and differentiated instruction. And a collaborative spirit that uplifts students and colleagues. His ability to build trusting relationships with learners who face significant challenges make him a cornerstone of our inclusive school community. Brian has the patience needed to support his students. His communication with his students and their parents can't takers is to be commended. He has high expectations for his students and holds them accountable. Brian leads by example through his commitment to continuous learning. Regularly engaging professional development and applying new strategies to support diverse learners. He partners closely with families to create individualized learning plans. Ensuring that our students receive the support they need both at school and at home. This last one I thought is so true with Mr. Goodwin. Brian is an unsung hero. He works outside the spotlight, but his presence in the classroom and his rapport that he has with his students, colleagues and school community is remarkable. And should be commended. Additionally, outside the classroom, as we know, Brian is a, a, a coach, a husband and a father. He is always the first to volunteer with the helping hand and he's a great role model for his two boys. Here up on the board, we have Brian being recognized by, uh, as you can see Governor McKee. Commissioner Infante Green and Senate President Valerie Lawson. Uh, Brian was one of fifty educators in Rhode Island who were recognized at Memorial Park up in Providence. At a educators water fire on September twenty seventh. Brian Goodwin, uh, district teacher of the year. Brian's been here all day and he, he asked if we could get him on early and I agree with him so he can get home and enjoy his dinner hopefully.
Say you're not missing hockey practice right now. Oh my gosh, my one night a week. Thank you so much for all you did, not only in this school, but also in the community, giving back and coaching and, uh, it's just the, the, the feedback from your peers is just exceptional. I mean, that's really what it's all about. To hear people that are in the arena with you share such positive stories about your impact here. Just awesome, Brian. Really fortunate to have you here.
If I may, oh, go ahead. Principal McKinnon and I were there that, that night and Brian is such an amazing educator. Family man and coach that his two sons whom he coaches would not miss their game. And so they were at their hockey game as athletes. While we were all fitting this amazing human being. Brian, it is an absolute honor to be your colleague.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
And you got a great smile, but don't be afraid of laughing around.
You've got those boys trained.
And then, yeah, you can absolutely dodge out of here unless you're really trying to delve into some school committee business. And add another, uh, another feather in your cap, but, uh, thank you for everything, Brian.
Thank you. Thank you, Brian.
You are.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Mike.
I'm Mike.
Absolutely. Thanks, Mr.
They might go on, might be one more time, not with that picture, but with other ones. Yeah. We'll just move on from there.
All right.
Want me to continue with?
Yeah, keep rolling. If you. It's great. Great to recognize him and thank you both for.
Absolutely.
Always so, so supportive of our teachers.
So soon we're gonna have up on the screen, a couple of new things. You probably noticed it right out in front of our school. We have a brand new flagpole, a, uh, who gosh, a, what do they call it?
Maritime.
Maritime, thank you. Maritime flagpole that's able to hold three flags. We had the old flagpole removed probably about a month ago. Uh, I think Mr. Burchard was involved with that and I want to thank Jason for all his help with that. But this new flagpole, uh, certainly brings us, um, to where we want to be. It's just a great way to, to look at the school, see the flagpole up and running. Also on the right hand side, as part of our, uh, I guess you could say water, uh, issues that we've been having in that room right there. Uh, we had a group come in and kind of fix that whole place, including the stairwell. And there's, uh, brand new, um, uh, handles there. It looks, makes that area look fantastic right now, which is right outside the store right there. So that's, this was something new. Next slide, Tom. Couple of things coming up. Our W O M S coed soccer team won their first game of the year last night. And I'm not sure, Mariah, did we know if they won today?
I don't know.
Okay. They played three games in a row, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday this week. Uh, they beat Barrington Christian Academy yesterday, uh, three to two. They, they are a very young team. Last year we were a very veteran team, a lot of eighth graders. This year I think we have, uh, I think eleven or twelve of our common players are in sixth grade or below. So they're, they're really starting to come around now, Mr. Coach Belizia and, uh, Coach Bafad, uh, working with the students. With the student athletes, they've really come a long way, uh, really in the last couple of weeks. Um, you, you can see the growth every game you, you go watch them. Next slide, Tom, another picture of our soccer team, uh, in the last week's, last, um, last week's game. We also have some pictures, next slide, please, of today's cross country meet. This was our first cross country meet at, uh, Penfield School. It was also Penfield's open house. They had us over there for both a soccer game and a cross country meet. But just a great opportunities for our cross country team. I believe we went over there with about twenty, uh, athletes, uh, getting an opportunity to run the one point seven miles. We have been invited, uh, by Tiverton Middle School to participate in their October eighteenth. I believe it's next Wednesday at, uh, Harding Gray. Uh, they now use that as a cross country meat place. Uh, they'll have McCray seafood there and Dell's lemonade afterwards. If families are interested, we'll put that out to everybody coming.
Absolutely.
And they, they will finish, uh, cross country, I think, has two more meets. Soccer has a few more meets, including the Block Island trip next, next Friday. Uh, and it is Block Island, not Martha's, didn't you? It's story for another day if you don't know it. Next slide, please, Tom. A week and a half ago, we had, uh, the Rhode Island State Archives, uh, chairperson, her name is Coordinator Ashley Salima. And Secretary of, Secretary of State Greg Amore, visit our sixth grade class. They were talking about the state archives and what history, uh, is at the state archives. Ashley Salima is a college friend of our sixth grade, uh, teacher Nicole Gay. And Nicole obviously teaches the social studies in the sixth grade, but just a great opportunity. Second year in a row, Secretary of State and Ashley Salima have visited our sixth grade. Just a great opportunity for our kids to hear it firsthand. Next slide, Tom. Uh, our pre K and our kindergarten students took a field trip last week to Old Stone Orchards. Uh, upon, uh, Coldbrook Road at the top of the hill. Uh, and they had an absolute great time, as you can see. Most of them do travel by bus, but it was, they had, some of the pictures here are truly outstanding, just a great opportunity for them. They tomorrow are pre K. Our, our kindergarten students will be going to, uh, and pre K students will be going to the, uh, fire complex right down the street. They'll be walking down there with their teachers. Uh, so they have, they had two field trips in the last two weeks. Uh, next slide, please, Tom. And we have, these are upcoming, we have a couple of cross country meets, soccer games over the next, uh, few days. I want to say our fall season will finish up, uh, by the third or fourth week of October. As I said, the pre K, uh, field trip to the fire station tomorrow. We also have our fifth grade going to the Wilbur House, the Little Compton Historical Society in Marjory. O'Toole, uh, is gonna meet them there. They have a brand new exhibit, uh, located just to the north of one of the houses. Uh, it's, it's a little walk where you can see some, uh, artist renditions of, uh, you know, some of the early Sakaanit, uh, Indian, um, artifacts. Uh, that'll be taking place again tomorrow. And the final thing on there is apple crunch day in conjunction with Chopwell's, uh, at noon time on ten twenty one. Uh, the entire school will take a bite of an apple, um, as part of Chopwell's push for, uh, healthy eating. That is everything that's going on here at Wilbur McMahon School.
Awesome, Principal McKinnon, thank you so much.
Welcome.
Right, I will turn it over.
It's still different apples, mind you.
Turn it over to our second act.
Oh, do you want to go on with the consent agenda and the public input?
We did the consent, did we? We did. Four oh. Superintendent report. Where you've been holding this for at least an hour. Let a little slip in the previous meeting, but here we go.
I know that we moved up Brian, um, but that was, that was wonderful. Okay, Tom, could you bring up my slideshow, our slideshow? It's short so that the business manager does not kick me under the table.
He's also the headliner, so.
Yeah.
As the tour continues, he could just. Never know.
Yeah, it's a length, close to Cam, but to that particular dashboard.
Looking to the coffee shop. Can really spread out. I'm like worried about.
It does load from that site. That I'm used to do my presentation. It is pulling straight from that site, you know? Okay, this is the twenty twenty five state assessments. And I don't think it's a mystery anymore that, um, let's face it, our district knocked it out of the park. Next slide, please. Last Wednesday, all superintendents were called to the Rhode Island Department of Education in Providence. And the commissioner did roll out, um, a huge presentation, um, regarding twenty twenty five state assessments. And she stressed the agency's priorities. Attendance is still an issue. We're like every other school, uh, it is, um, one of our priorities as well here, um, at, in Little Compton. Every district is, since the pandemic is having a difficult time coming, um, back to pre pandemic attendance rates. I think we're doing okay. Jack and I are always in that dashboard. High quality teaching and learning, uh, is also one of RIDE's, um, folk I this year. And that's a deep focus on high quality teaching, learning to improve outcomes in E L A and math across all grade levels. Um, post secondary success is huge. The whole end game regarding what we do every day in schools is, uh, about post secondary success. And also closing, um, gaps. Commissioner calls them opportunity gaps, our multi level learners and our differently able students are lagging behind in every district when it comes to proficiency rates. Next, Tom, thank you so much. Um, some key takeaways that the, uh, commissioner wanted us to share with our communities is that, um, things are pretty flat in, in Rhode Island when it comes to E L A and math. However, there are some, um, increases, you know, a couple of percentage points for E L A and math. Just one point. One point three percent, um, certainly not where the commissioner wants to be, wants the state to be. Overall Rhode Island's, um, napes have improved. I think it was gone from thirty fifth, um, in the country, which was abysmal to in the teens, I think fourteen in, in napes, which is, uh, the same test, uh, in every, uh, single state. Every year they test a different school, um, some, some years it's middle school level, some years it's other levels. We are in ape school this year. Rhode Island's science performance remained relatively unchanged, uh, absolutely stagnant across, uh, several years since the new science assessment was rolled out, um, as the next generation's science assessment. And once again, being chronically absent in K, um, impacts learning. She, it showed us so much data regarding as you are in kindergarten, so you are likely throughout your educational, uh, journey. Unless there's a change in habits. Next. This is statewide data. They said a couple of percentage points in, um, E L A and one point three in math. Not the kind of gains that, um, anyone is satisfied with. Next. Science absolutely flat for, for the past five years, thirty two point one, and now it's, it's even lower. The science assessment is highly rigorous. So the fact that we are, we nailed it and we're number one in the state, um, is, is a testament to how incredible our, uh, teachers are. Next. And, um, basically what this slide is saying is chronically absent students on average consistently perform lower than their not chronically absent peers. In other words, if you are not chronically absent, you will, uh, perform two times at the rate of those students who are chronically absent. So if you're chronically absent, you're, uh, eighteen and a half percent proficiency, um, in E L A at grade level. Uh, if you, uh, are on time and ready to learn every day, uh, you, you double that. So that was a very sobering, um, deep dive there. There were at least dozen or more slides regarding, uh, student absenteeism in our state, and it's everywhere. So we're doing what we can here, uh, at Wilbur McMahon to keep it below ten percent. You know, ten percent of the kids, uh, at, uh, you know, chronically absent. But it, it is, it's a lift here as well, I have to say. Next. Thank you so much. This is our equity and excellence in education. Everything we do is grounded in this, um, vision statement. That also incorporates a lot of language from the International Baccalaureate. Next, that's up on the site, it's everywhere. I want to start off saying that for two years in a row, we reached five stars because we did keep our absentee rate at, at below ten percent faculty and students. And, uh, our, uh, proficiency rates were among the highest in the state in all three assessed areas. And so those ratings will come out in the next, um, two, three months. Fingers crossed. Next. And here we get to the good stuff, everybody. And so, you know, we want to remain humble, you know? But it is pretty much a challenge to remain humble when, uh, we see Little Compton up there. All schools slash district data, we're seventy six point four percent, um, in E L A and, and, you know, right across, we almost made it to seventy percent science. And, you know, through the top ten up there. And if you look at the top ten, um, you know, there's, there's quite a big jump between ten and, and one. So we're, we're doing amazingly well. Uh, this is strong classroom teaching, this is high quality curriculum, this is students, uh, on time, ready to learn with families who, um, are supportive of their children and the school. And of course our elected officials at every level here in Little Compton. Uh, town council, budget committee, all of you. None of this is possible without an entire community behind the little school that could. Uh, I think I got some subtle hints, uh, at Waterfire, speaking to some RIDE, um, employees up there remarking on how remarkable our school was and it didn't quite compute. And then last Wednesday, because the data was released, uh, six o'clock Thursday morning. Someone from Ride approached me with a big smile, the body language was, was more than the outfit I had on, you know? Um, it, it was more, you know, it was, uh, so apparent that, um, this person was the cat that swallowed the canary. And then, uh, like you do every year, I get up early, have my coffee and I waited for the portal to open. And then I called Jack screaming, um, and then froze because, um, when you reach this, uh, level that our students and our faculty and staff have, um, the pressure's on to maintain this level of excellence. The pressure's on to push to, uh, through the seventies to eighty to ninety, um, in terms of the percentages of our kids who were meeting or exceeding grade level expectations in E L A math, uh, and science. It is remarkable. Um, I'm still stunned, I used the word gobsmacked, I've been reading a lot of British fiction. So that was definitely, um, stuck in my head. Whole axed and God gobsmacked, uh, of an Anglophile and it just came out in, in my response. Next. And not only we're, you know, we're number one in the state, um, aggregate data. And, uh, when you see Little Compton come up, um, three times, it's, I'm not a gambler, but it must be what it's like to hit that slot, you know, the slot. Uh, but our grade levels also, if you look at, look at E L A, um, grade three was number two in the state. Grade four was number one, number one, number one, number two, number one. These, these rates in middle school absolutely unprecedented, I think, in the East Bay. Middle, middle schools are the most difficult grades to grow in terms of student achievement. It's developmentally the most difficult stage. And just look at seventh and eighth grade and we have a number one in grade eight for E L A. And it, it's, it's absolutely extraordinary for those of us who live in the data space, uh, administration and curriculum coordinators. And in math, number four, number one, number one, number two, number one, number six. Just five, six years ago, we were in the teens or higher. So this, this is a remarkable feat. And in science, where the rest of the state, as you know, is stagnant, uh, we just keep on going up. And I did put, um, you know, our gains, we were sixty eight point three percent last year. We were still number one in the L A. Um, this year obviously with seventy six point four math. Last year, um, we were sixty five point five, this year we're seventy two point one. And science, we're fifty four point eight and this year we're sixty nine point two. Now the fifty four point eight is, with science, it's not, uh, grades three through eight, so you don't have six grade levels. In, in science, it's just two. You just have grade five and grade eight. So to have these results with small, you know, that, that end value is so small, um, is just remarkable. I cannot say enough about our teachers. Educating children and, and teens is, um, if you want to attain educational excellence is definitely like staging a huge production. It is a collaborative art and our teachers are the talent. Okay. And, uh, school administrators, district administrators, elected officials. We're the ones who have to guarantee an optimal environment for learning and ample resources. And Little Compton is there, we do that. Uh, and that's why we have these incredible results. I think some of us are still numb, I think some of our teachers are. And the hard work, the wonderful resources, the optimal class sizes, it all converges. Right here, we've cracked the code and we have to continue doing so. Next. So we are committed to continuous improvement. Uh, yes, our proficiency rates are the highest in the state. No, we're here, what we want, uh, for our kids. And we're not gonna be happy till we're in the nineties. And so we will continue to improve student outcomes in the L A notably in writing by analyzing these constructed and written response items. From E L A and math, there's a lot of writing in math to calibrate expectations and the responses. You know, we're super solid when it comes to reading, but we have areas of the writing component that, um, I don't want to use the word weak, but they're challenging. And so, uh, we've already started working on those, our teachers have already met. Um, our literacy specialists, uh, specialists are leading the charge there and our E L A teachers as well. Next. On the right, you'll see a listing. The commissioner says we have sixty four L A's in the state, so we topped sixty four, one out of sixty four. But I think, um, it's more like fifty six or fifty seven because some districts are not on the list because ten or fewer. You know, the percentages are, are just too low, um, to be included. Okay, now mathematics, we have, go back, sorry, go back. We have changed mathematic programs a few times in the past few years. When Jack came to me last year and said, I, I, I know this is relatively new, this curriculum, but superintendent, our teachers are saying it's not working. And so Jack, Jack listens to the teachers, I, you know, they're the experts in the classroom. And so I said, flip the switch, go for it. And what a boost we saw, uh, and, and so that's been incredible. We started it more earnestly, um, laterally and vertically collaborating with Portsmouth. And because that's our receiving school, and so we'll continue to do that. And, and I think, you know, one of our specialists said recently, our tier one interventions in our classrooms. And, and I think, you know, one of our specialists said recently, our tier one interventions in our classrooms are so strong and deep, and that is why we are moving well past pre-pandemic levels when most districts are stagnant. We catch our students before they fall in our classrooms, we call that a tier one intervention. A tier two is a specialist coming in and sometimes pulling out. And tier three is much more individualized and sometimes includes special education or accommodations to sort of move into the child's educational profile. And I have to give our, our teachers all, all the credit in the world for catching our kids before they fall. They agonize over each student who is not meeting or exceeding expectations throughout the school year. I think moving to a trimester also. When, when Jack and the teachers wanted to do that, I was skeptical, you know? And it's not because I'm a traditionalist or anything, this needed a rationale for literally flipping the table on everything, our, our report cards, our scheduling. And they came up with a very compelling rationale in, in writing, and I said, go for it. And I think that has also factored into the success of our 2025 school year, just literally in the stratosphere. Next, thank you so much. Continuous improvement in science. When I was at RIDE last week, the commissioner did say, those school districts that are looking at science very differently as the science teacher as facilitator, the, the science classroom as wholly inquiry based, sense making, knowledge building by the student front and center. And, and I know she was referencing us, I think it was actually Phyllis Trumpy, one of her staff members, when she said those districts who have dedicated their science program to these skills, they're the ones who are moving along and gaining traction. And here we are, of course, Compass School is right behind us, it is a science centric charter school. But that's fine, and, and it's not about the numbers, thank you, it's not about the numbers per se, because those numbers mean a percentage of kids. It's our students, it's our individuals. So when the state is flatlined at thirty, 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 basically across the board, thirty percent proficiency rate, and we're, you know, at seventy, sixty nine and change, let's, let's round up, seventy and above. It is because our teachers are informing what instruction should look like, they're informing it, going to the principal, saying, we need this, and we need to make this change. We need to add this to the report card dropdown. We were thinking that trimesters would be better. We need to grab five minutes from every period to do an enrichment period, you know? Jack is listening to them and is making it to my desk. And we are just getting out of their way and letting them do what they do beautifully. The proof is right here. You have the most extraordinary teaching staff in the state. But they also have an incredible community behind them. And it is an honor for the two of us, and of course, the money guy, to serve this community and, and see these results and watch our kids so excited in the classroom. It's, it's the only fun I have on the job, really, is having my office among the kids. And every day I see students infected with a love of learning. Unlike anything ever seen. And you saw it yesterday in the tour. So I want to take this time to thank you. And to thank our teachers, any of them who are watching, I know a few do every now and then. Thank you for all you do for the children and teens in this building. You are remarkable. Here's my presentation.
Thank you, Laurie. Dr. Mitchell. Committee members, any comments? We'll defer to you guys first, I'll close the comments if you don't mind.
Cheers.
Yeah, well said, Sue, yeah. Very exciting. Awesome.
You, you mentioned the gap between number ten and number one, but there's also been a large gap between two and one, and a lot of.
A few were.
Yeah.
It's a.
The best of the best, Little Compton, the best.
It's really cool, it's really cool. I've won things before, but I think this is the most fulfilling because, as I've shared with certainly the administration, it's like, our role is to give you the tools and hope that when we're communicating in the community with the parents, we're getting the buy-in, being positive around the kids and certainly in all aspects of our community life. But to see it come to fruition with the administration, leading the teachers, the teachers leading the students, the students leading the learning, it's like, it's pretty sweet. And to your point, once you crack the code, and I mean, is it, the athlete in me is like, I remember when we won that first national championship, we won the second one, but it like clicked. Right, like you, now we know, now the teachers know, the fact that they have such open communication with Jack, Principal McKinnon, I'm sorry. It's, it's really special, and I hope that we can continue this. And I was, I mean, I don't think you announced us going from classroom to classroom yesterday, but boy, they were engaged and.
Awesome.
It was awesome. I mean, I've been in schools before at this age, and somebody walks in and it's like a huge distraction.
I did not.
It wasn't, I mean, there was a couple waves, a couple smiles, but they were right in their, in their work and.
And loving it.
Congratulations to you all, certainly the teachers, and then the families, because
Gosh, yeah.
this doesn't happen. You said that there's several schools that are left off the list. And I can't help but think that that's because it's a collection of challenges they face. But one of the challenges that we seem to overcome in this community is that whether your kid is going to take over the family business, or you have aspirations of sending them to the Ivy League, there is an educational buy-in in this, in this community to set your child up for success so that they can succeed in whatever they pursue following their tenure in education. So just wow.
Just right, and RIDE will be coming, they have reached out, they will be coming on site to.
Don't give away all the.
The secret sauce.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
That secret sauce is excellent teaching.
It is.
Dynamic learning, supportive families, in the town of Little Compton.
It takes everything. But wow, to see the numbers grow from, I think when I was on, first on the committee, I think we had like, we were in the middle single digits, and then we had one like that was in the teens, and we tightened it up to see it to go to this level and to Mark's point, to see us in the seventies, and there's a little bit of a gap there between one and two, and more than one of them. But I love how you said, let's get to ninety percent, because nine out of ten kids exceeding, meeting or exceeding a grade level is, is what it's all about. So thank you all really for your continued dedication and effort in providing these outcomes to our children. Mr. McNamie. The headliner usually doesn't come on until eight thirty, it shows.
We'll put this agenda together. Follow that presentation, come on.
Did you have been the opening act tonight?
Absolutely.
Wow.
But. And hopefully that will serve as well as we move through the, the budget process this year as well, too.
Yeah, absolutely.
All good things. So twenty four is still out there, and from the audit standpoint, the auditors have that information. So I'm hoping that we get a report probably within the next thirty days on that. I'm not expecting any changes on the school side, probably not any changes on the town side either. The twenty five year, so we had a couple of issues, a couple of items that happened in this past month. We did receive three invoices from the state for for tuition for out of district students that were approximately seventeen thousand dollars. So we, we added that to our operating expenses for twenty five. And we have the ongoing saga with electricity. We now have all the credits that have come in from the virtual net metering, which are roughly, I believe, around sixty three thousand dollars. So Rhode Island Energy has credited that to our account. Now, we haven't paid for all of that, because we owe, we owe the virtual net metering company sixty five percent of those credits. Because we're getting a thirty five percent discount. So we owe them that money. So what's happening now, I just got an invoice today, which was for November and December of last year. And that, that bill is around eight thousand, eight thousand dollars, again, offsetting what was existing as a credit. So we have going into January, February, March, above fifty thousand dollars in credits. On the other side, we just got a whole bunch of invoices from Nextstamp, which is the company that's the third party administrator for the virtual net metering project. So they're sending in the credits that are being generated, that are being allocated to our account as well as the town account. And, and then billing us for that sixty dollars. We paid, on our side, we paid about seventeen thousand so far. What I don't have is that, and with, especially with the solar energy, you're not going to see the credits. Because we started that in what, November, December, so you're not going to see the big credits coming in until probably, maybe you look at April, May and June. So I'm anticipating that, once I get all the Rhode Island Energy credits in there, bills in there, that we may still wind up a little bit of a credit there, which then would offset any of the expenses that we're going to be charging for the virtual net meter. So we still have some, a little bit of exposure on that item, twenty five. But that, that's the final item that we have to kind of wrap up twenty five. On twenty six, you know, we just started the year, but as we know, we settled the teacher's contract, and we had a placeholder in there which covered the, the cost of that contract. So we're not anticipating any negative impact on the contract. On the Portsmouth High School, our out of district, we had three students less than budget. So that would approximate about a fifty thousand dollar savings for the year, so that's a positive. The CTE for Newport Tech, Newport County Technical Center, we had budgeted three and a half students. That's what just came in, so the number there, we budgeted fifteen five for the tuition, the tuition did go up to sixteen thousand. So that would add, of course, about seven hundred, a thousand, seven fifty to our annual cost. But we should be okay in that, in that area. And again, I've got to kind of look and see what this year looks like for the electricity. I, I did have a fairly low number in there for the twenty six budget, so I'll monitor that one and see if we need to kind of tweak that number at all. But other than that, I think twenty six is, is looking pretty good.
Excellent, any questions from anyone? We're all, we're whole with the, the credits back for solar and, I mean, I mean, the, the implementation, not the net metering piece, which I feel like you need to have a Netflix special to work out all those characters.
So I have to file a tax return. The tax return will be, I'll, I'll file it on behalf of the town. And that will allow us to get the thirty percent investment tax credit refunded to us. So we've got the project registered, so we had to register that with the IRS, get approval. Now that it was registered, we now can then apply for that investment credit of thirty percent of the total amount of the, the project, so it was like five and change, so we're expecting about a hundred sixty eight thousand dollars of credit. And that return is due on November fifteenth. I could extend it, but I'm probably going to just get that done. It's a Form nine nine DT that has to get filed.
You weren't kidding, you should have been the opening act. Christiane. Thank you, John. Really appreciate the work you do for the school committee in reporting, and then also the work you are doing at the town level in terms of reporting there as well. All right, committee reports, policy subcommittee report. We had a policy subcommittee meeting right before this meeting. And we discussed superintendent contracts and their ability to act without our approval and what that looks like. That'll be coming before this committee for the first read in the next school committee meeting, I think that's on November, is it the eighth? No, no. Let's see, the first is a Monday, is a Saturday. The twelve, thank you, Mariah, thank you. We also took a look at, and will continue to have ongoing discussions regarding our tuition and non-resident policy. We did have a public comment, and myself and Amy got a lot to think about before we bring something before this committee, but certainly we are going to be, continue to listen to the public, and we will be thoughtful in our approach on how to handle this when we do present it to the committee for a vote, if that is to occur. And then the final piece was, we discussed a not cellphone policy, it is a electronic, personal electronic development policy. And we have tasked Sean and the administration to put something together regarding that as the state will go live with it at beginning of school year twenty six with the state law. And it is our responsibility as a school committee to have a policy in place before that time, is that correction? That is correct. And then other than that, we have not decided the next policy subcommittee meeting, but we will certainly have one before the end of the year. That is all. Item seven two, Mr. Mark Reischer with the Portsmouth School Committee liaison report.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll say this, there's a lot going on. Trips to Washington DC and students publishing books, a lot of exciting stuff was reported, but related to Little Compton, really, only a couple of items and where, where, where Little Compton was mentioned, the first one being, they spoke of enrollment, seventy six students there, is that correct? Broken down to twenty one freshmen, seventeen sophomores, twenty five juniors and thirteen seniors, just double checking their numbers. No students enrolled in the CTE program. The other piece related to that is that we were invited to the open house for CTE.
Hang on.
Yeah, what is the date?
Tuesday, October the fourteenth.
Yeah. So any, everyone told them to go and see the program. They're going to have a little tour and talk, and what is the time?
Six, don't, don't be, six thirty, I'm, I'm glad you're bringing it up, because I almost forgot about it, and I have it here, so.
Six thirty.
Six thirty PM.
So normally I would go, unfortunately, I'm going to be out of town on that day, so I'm not going to be able to attend.
Going.
Okay, so great, but just so everyone knows.
Put it in a Friday memo.
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to try to go despite it being my anniversary, but maybe I could parlay it into a dinner afterwards. We'll see what happens.
Well, thank you for going, and if you're watching at home.
Well, thank you for going and if you're watching at home, honey.
I feel terrible. I feel terrible about missing it. And yeah, so that's, that's it.
It says here it'll only be a half hour, so I don't think you're missing much. I'm hoping that I can squeak in and squeak out. And thank you, Dr. Copeland, for reaching out and making sure that Mark was on the case. He was. And even mentions you here, particularly Mark Leischer, who I know is ours, committee liaison, but you already know. Thank you, Mark. Wellness Committee Report, Ms. Susan Chase.
Well, we held our first meeting of the school year on September twenty-third, and it was well-attended. And it was a lot of enthusiasm and work. So Jessica Higgins and Nicole Gray, who run our farm, well, it, it's an iteration of the farm to school, school or sometimes the farm to sea, or soil to the sea.
From the soil to the sea.
From the soil to the sea. Is that what it's called?
Farm and sea to school was not funded by the federal government and everyone screamed and yelled. And that money was clawed back. And so now it, so now we may not have to change the name for the grant that was written. So, yeah.
So anyway, they're alive and well and making great plans for us. October is food wellness in, in the schools around the state. And I think we've already talked about Apple Crunch Day will be coming up on October twenty-first. And then the staff and the staff have resumed and are enjoying their wellness activities and yoga and exercise and there's talk of meditation as well. And then Lori Doherty isn't here tonight from the PTO, but I know she's been really busy and doing wonderful things, welcoming our preschool students to school and taking care of our staff. And then I'm very excited on the sixteenth, there are five of us that are going to the state wellness breakfast. So I'll be able to tell you more about that next month.
Awesome. Excellent. Yeah. A nice shout, shout out to Lori. She does so much for our community across administration, teachers, kids.
Yeah, she really does.
We were dropping off clothes to her this past weekend. She's delivering to the community, just such a great person.
Treasure. That's immunity treasure.
Seven-four, Town Recreation Committee Liaison.
Thank you. Tom, are those slides available? Two things to report from the rec committee, from our last meeting and one from the meeting before. I don't know if we mentioned the scoreboard, but it is up and live. And so that's something that the rec committee worked hard in conjunction with the community and the school to make happen, and it's really nice.
Well done on that.
You know, with our colors and the remote control, that everything's working and it's doing all that stuff.
Numbers look like numbers.
The second piece from the, from the rec committee is that we finally have installed, well, not finally, it was actually a pretty quick project, an AED, solar powered down at Veterans Field. So I just brought a couple of pictures that the chief had shared with us, Police Chief Petron, who I can't say enough good stuff about working with him was a joy. He is an incredible project leader. Found, found the funding for this, led the project through and through with incredible communication transparency throughout. Just a really, really great thing that he was able to do with the rec committee to really bring something that's going to improve the safety for a community and the school. They are solar powered. And if you flip through, Tom, to the next picture, there's just a couple of other shots that he had shared with us. And you can go out and see it for yourself, but there it is in all its glory. It's a really, actually a really nice sort of looking thing too. With, you know, a light that goes off, it directly connects to the firehouse and police what, as soon as it's open, with an AED in there that can be used, the defibrillator that can be used to save lives. So it's just a really great thing to improve safety for the community and I can't thank the chief enough for it and everyone on the rec committee. And that's everything from that committee.
We've done it. Yeah, that's fantastic. That serves everyone. Well done.
Yep. We'll, we'll try to get one down in Adamsville or maybe another location. We're, we're not done, you know, making the community safer. It's something we try to do every so often, just keep it going.
Awesome. Excellent. Really great stuff. All right. Item eight, eight-one, any member requests for information from administration or legal counsel? Oh, you have a.
The RF.
Is this for Sean or for us?
It's, it's for you.
Oh, you're just sharing.
This is like an inverse sort of.
What's going on here? Is this allowed?
Phil Conte is available or someone from his office next week if you need a special meeting to approve the RF, the bid for the HVAC. I did send you an explanation and fleshed out regarding why they were choosing those particular
Correct.
splits, et cetera. So, or you could put it off till November, just.
Is it a, I mean.
I think the bid is.
So for, for example, I know we wanted to get the construction moving on some things this summer. Is this one of those things that like?
Bid is, will be good for ninety days, so you can wait till November or a special meeting next week. Wednesday or Thursday night. Just think about it. Is that appropriate that I said?
It's fine. Yeah, we're good.
Yeah, it just came in from Phil.
All right. If there's no other requests, I will consider a motion to enter into executive session. So moved. Do I have a second? And we will vote the earl call, Mariah.
Susan Chase. Amy Glashen.
Hi.
Mark Glashen. Travis Savi.
All right. Yes. What's up?
YouTube.
Go green.
I'm doing.
Oh, white.
Okay.
All right.
Just taking from the disclosure votes.
Excellent. We have reconvened here an open session and I will notify that there were no votes taken in executive session. I will consider a motion to seal the minutes of executive session.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries four zero, the executive session minutes are sealed. And I will consider a motion to adjourn. So moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. That concludes the silver rate meeting of the school committee.
So ignore what I think about Pinfield because I did a